If we have a disaster, a fire, or tornado, you'll just either follow Chief Icecant or Deputy Chief Logey to our appointed areas. Roll call Alder Person, Shelley?
Alder Person Whitaker?
Here.
Alder Person Schneider?
Here.
Alder Person Duco?
Here.
Alder Person Dowling Urban?
Here.
Alder Person Randall?
Here.
Alder Person Ferguson? Alder Person Anthony?
Here.
Alder Person Ovian?
Here.
Alder Person Dittelman?
Here.
Alder Person Kaiser? Alder Person Steele?
Here.
Alder Person Rothweiler?
Here.
Alder Person Elmore?
Here.
Alder Person Weigant?
Here.
Alder Person Sullivan? Alder Person Astoff?
Here.
Mayor Alder Person Ferguson, Kaiser, and Sullivan are all excused. Roll call of department heads? City Treasurer Bierman?
Here.
City Attorney Horner?
Present.
Police Chief Matt Icecant?
Here.
Fire Chief Stephanie Mills? Finance Director Jamie Maitreit?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole?
Here.
Director of Wastewater Brett Friedman?
Here.
Director of Library Lee Anders Spearmun?
Here.
Director of IT Ty Buckner? City Engineer Scott Sager?
Here.
Director of Health, Housing, and Buildings Scott Tyler? Assistant Director of Economic Development, Planning, and Zoning Eric Schouster? Director of Human Resources Bill Clay? Director of Maintenance Mike Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor, Chief Mills is excused and Kurt Logey, Deputy Fire Chief Kurt Logey is here for him. Director of IT Ty Buckner is excused and his place is Lee Strong. Scott Tyler's excused and William Clay is excused.
Okay. If everybody will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Okay, we have no public hearing. Public participation, come up, state your name, and you have two to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Nicole Hettenhausen. I'm here to speak about Greg Crawford and the recent pleading guilty to loan fraud schemes and the direct impact that it has had on our neighborhood and the importance of how we move forward. For years Greg Crawford used illegal straw buyer schemes to acquire homes in our city, several of which were historically significant. Under his control these properties sat vacant and deteriorated, some were eventually demolished despite interest from locals who wanted to purchase and restore them. These weren't just empty structures, these were pieces of our neighborhood's history and now they are gone. Given that some of these homes were directly involved with this criminal case and others were acquired through the same fraudulent methods, I'd like to ask can the city, one, take any steps to acknowledge the damage done, particularly the loss of historic homes and the harm to our neighborhood's character and stability? Two, what will happen to the properties he still owns? That are connected to those same fraudulent activities? Two that I am aware of specifically are located at 303 North Jackson and 609 South Jackson Street. Is there a process in place to ensure these homes are returned to productive, community-minded use? I believe this is a great opportunity for our city to help the neighborhoods begin to repair what's been lost and to protect this against any kind of exploitation going forward. I'd love to be of help if I can in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
I'm Lori Powell and I'm also here to talk about Greg Crawford. I live on South Jackson Street and Mr. Crawford had a building at 401 South Jackson that was demolished this year. It was a beautiful home that lots of people tried to buy and they were unable to because he was engaged in criminal fraud that kept him from being able to sell those properties or kept him from doing so. And he still is in one of those loans at 609 South Jackson. And what I would like to ask for this, from the city, if it's possible, I would love to see the City of Belleville submit a victim impact statement to the courts for his sentencing in October in the federal court. I don't know if that's possible, but that's what I'm here to ask for because we have been victimized by his activity and we have all suffered. I've suffered by criminal activity in my neighborhood, by cats all over my neighborhood, by, I mean, in countless ways. You know, just my own personal attention having to be given to turning in tickets on the property to keep it up to going because he won't let it go because he's doing his little criminal games. And the other thing I would like to offer is that I would love to see there be some kind of neighborhood, some people, to create some kind of a task force or an idea group to study how other communities are taking on these vacant properties. I know that we had a vacant property ordinance at the end of the Eckert administration and that went away in the last administration. I think there was a lot of value there and I think we kind of maybe threw the baby out with the bathwater on that. I'd like to really be part of exploring how we can proactively as neighbors support growth.
Thanks Lori.
Thank you.
Keith?
Good evening everyone, Keith Owens, 250 Abind Street. We are opposed, just wanted to share this with you, of an agenda item that is on tonight's agenda of 11D about the banner that is the historical banner that's on 127, the one that's on 127 Mascuda Avenue and changing it out with a banner that has Gustav Kerner or Sophie Kerner on it and/or that has Sophie Kerner on it. About two and a half years, three and a half years ago when the banners did go up, one of the individuals who's part of the Friends of Gustav Kerner had that banner made and had it put up by the city's Streets Department without city council's approval. And our neighborhood went nuts and came to city council and said, "This does not represent us. This individual does not represent our community." Yes, we do have the Gustav Kerner house in our neighborhood, but not to that place where they're wanting to put that banner. We're asking you, we're not against the banner, but if you wouldn't mind putting it on the grounds of the Gustav Kerner house so people will be able to associate that individual with those grounds instead of across the street and down all the ways? If you wouldn't mind doing that or tabling it because we found, the neighborhood found out about it three and a half hours ago when the agenda came out. We really would like some say in this and if you would table it for tonight so we can talk about this as a neighborhood, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks Keith. Anybody else for public participation? Come on up.
Good evening everyone, my name is Deborah Miller, I'm the president of Prevail Institute for Flourish Your Communities located in Shiloh, Illinois. And I'm here tonight to briefly speak about State of Community Defense 2.0, the Unity Experience, which takes place Saturday, September 27th and Sunday, September 28th. This is a two-part affair. It's going to be a fantastic occasion if it's allowed to go forward. So just kind of want to inform the city mayor of the city and also the city council about exactly what's transpiring as part of the climax of the event. And so I'm gonna read a letter. I haven't given this particular letter to Chief Matt, I hope I don't miss his name, fumble his name, Icecant?
That's correct. Yeah.
Alright, cool. So I'll read this letter, it's to him, but it's very important for you guys to hear this as well. Alright, it says, "Dear Chief Matt Icecant, I hope this letter finds you in good health and spirits. I am Deborah Miller, the president of Prevail Institute for Flourish Your Communities Incorporated, a charitable 501(c)(3) organization and the senior event coordinator for our Back to Blue Tribute Workshop scheduled to be held on Sunday, September 28th, 2025 at Belleville Memorial Park in Belleville, Illinois from 1:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. This special tribute will take place at the park's band shelter. We have a three-part goal to achieve this year's Back to Blue Tribute slash workshop, to educate the public on exactly what the Thin Blue Line means, why it's important for the community to support law enforcement, and to show how we're all interconnected with a common purpose. Two, to fully express our appreciation for the men and women in blue through song, greetings, keynote address, special video tribute, and award ceremony. Three, unify police officers and the community through team-building initiatives, photo fund, and dance. On this note, you and your staff of officers along with your families are cordially invited to attend and participate. We're going to rock the blue like never before. Together, let's embrace the occasion of us, law enforcement, and the community coming together to make the world a better place for all. Additionally, we want you to know that your purposes and service are invaluable to our well-being as a nation, that we were never called Ghostbusters for any situation when all we must do is dial 911 for the brave men and women in blue. Back to Blue 2025 and beyond. Thank you."
Thank you. Anybody else for public participation? Nope? Okay, we're gonna move on. I just want to recognize that the character word of the month is citizenship, which means doing your share to make your community better and being a good neighbor. And now I want to recognize the track students from West and East. If you guys want to come up with your coaches or whoever wants to come up, I've got a proclamation for you. So for those of you that don't know, we had some outstanding athletes this year representing East and West in track. Actually several of them are All-American and they went to Oregon. So we're just gonna take a moment to recognize them all tonight. Okay. I'm gonna try and make this a lot of stats, so just bear with me. But the city wants to recognize the outstanding achievements of Belleville District 201 student athletes and coaches for the 2024-2025 track season. The Belleville West High School Boys Track Team had a historic season, breaking multiple records, winning the championships and achieving the highest state finish in history. And they competed at a national level for the first time with five athletes earning All-American status. The team secured a victory in the St. Clair County meet. At the state level, the team took eight events, ultimately claiming a third-place trophy in the 3A division. Is that it? Yep. The following athletes placed at state. Troy McLean, first place for the 400 meter. Jalen Cole, first place for the 110 meter hurdles. Brayden Missy, third place for long jump. Marquez Bolinar, fourth place for 200 meter. And then we had Freddie Ferry, Calvin Nolan, Brayden Missy, and Troy McLean for fifth place in the 4x400. And in addition to that, we had five of these athletes that went to, competed at the Nike Outdoor Nationals at the University of Oregon and they came home with All-Americans. Marquez Bolinar, the eighth place for 200 meter. Brayden Missy, Calvin Nolan, and Troy McLean placed third in the 4x400. And this is all under the direction of the Belleville West coaches Alonso Nelson, Don Harper Nelson, Matt Missy, Chaz Brown, Wornik, and LaAndre Carter. Third more. The Belleville West Girls Track Team placed state. Amiesha Robinson got third place for the 300 hurdles. And then we had additional athletes from Belleville East for the Boys Track Team that placed at state. Daleen Donaldson placed second in both the 110 hurdles and the 300 hurdles. And then... Jayden Rice placed eighth in both the 110 hurdles and the 300 hurdles. And then the following athletes from Belleville East Girls Track Team placed at state. Lyric Jones, fifth place for 400 meters. Tekeah Tiller, she did eighth place for the triple jump. And the team all over placed fifth in the 4x100, seventh in the 4x200, and third in the 4x400. Then we had three of these athletes were named to the All-Metro Team. Jalen Cole for Belleville West. Daleen Donaldson for Belleville East. Troy McLean for Belleville West. So on behalf of the city, we just want to recognize the outstanding achievements of our students, the coaches, the athletes, and we congratulate you. Okay, one, two, three. Alright, we're good. Alright. Yeah, okay. Well, that was the fun part of the night, so if you're ready, we'll move, you guys ready to move on? Okay. So I need a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of June 16th, 2025, special meeting of June 24th, and executive session of June 24th, 2025.
Schneider?
Dowling Urban?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Claims, payrolls, and dispersments, 9A, motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of $3,58,021.49 and payroll in the amount of $1,093,557.89.
Whitaker, so moved.
Dowling Urban?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Dowling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no reports. Oral reports, 11A, motions from streets and grades, Alder Person Randall?
Thank you, Mayor. Folks, would you like me to read these together or separately?
Together.
Together? Alright, motions from streets and grades, 11A1 is a motion to approve Forni Contracting Company, Inc., lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $168,800 for the 2025-2026 Motor Fuel Tax TIF Ditching Program Contact. Contract. 11A2 is a motion to approve an agreement with Oates Associates for $9,200 to include the design of an entrance to the property acquired by the city off Greenmount Lane and to assist in coordinating utility reloake fees. Total contract increase from $105,500 to $114,700 utilizing TIF III. 11A3 is a motion to approve an agreement with TWM for $37,320 for the construction observation of Cool Valley Drainage, Greenmount Lane to Tower Plaza utilizing TIF III. 11A4, motion to enter an agreement with Oates Associates for $25,000 to prepare plans for resurfacing East Adams Street, South Charles Street to the alley to the east as an alternative bid package to the East Monroe and South Bend resurfacing bid home rule sales tax. 11A5 is a motion to approve TWM's proposal for $19,400 to create a priority list of streets to be improved according to our pavement condition index, GIS module, to include average daily traffic counts, existing pavement condition, or expected pavement condition, motor fuel tax, and TIF. 11A6 is a motion to approve an agreement with Oates Associates for $6,500 to prepare 2025 SRTS grant for Royal Heights Road, Abraham Lincoln School to Memorial Drive to include two sets of bump outs on Royal Heights Road, a new crossing at South Park Drive or Memorial Drive, and a shared use path along Royal Heights Road TIF III. So moved.
Rothweiler, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Duco?
Aye.
Dowling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Alright.
Okay, motions carry. Motion from Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Alder Person Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Fire and Police Commissioners, I would like to approve a motion to promote Lieutenant Robert Thompson, Thomason to captain. My Sergeant Tim Crim to lieutenant and Detective Angelique Shields to sergeant effective July 8/12/2025, 1201, so moved.
Whitaker, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Duco?
Aye.
Dowling Urban?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Astoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Chief, you want to introduce everyone? Take your time, don't...
I'm gonna say a few words.
It's not like they all want to get out of here.
These three promotions tonight, these are, these three officers do the job extremely well and I'm very proud of them. Two of them I've worked most of my career with. And Angelique, she's fairly new, seven years on the department, but does a stellar job every day and we're gonna really miss her in detectives. She's going back to the street, but that's part of getting promoted. Sergeant Angelique Shields has been on the department for seven years. She started in 2018, she was a patrol officer, a field training officer. She was a member of the DEA Task Force. She spent most of her career in the detective division and she's an investigator with the Major K Squad. So she's leaving detectives to go back to the street. Lieutenant Tim Crim, he's been on the force for 21 years. He started in 2004, he was a patrol officer, a field training officer, K-9 officer, a patrol sergeant, a master sergeant most recently in the administrative division. He's a supervisor on the Major K Squad and he's an instructor at the Southwestern Illinois Police Academy. And Captain Rob Thomason. Captain Rob Thomason has been on the force for 25 years. He started in 2000. He's been a patrol officer, a field training officer, a special agent with the Auto Theft Task Force, spent most of his career also in the detective division. He was a detective sergeant, a master sergeant, a squad commander, lieutenant on patrol. He most recently worked in the admin division as the commander. He is a deputy commander of the Major K Squad. He's an instructor at the SWIP Police Academy and an adjunct professor at Lindenwood and McKendry University. Three great officers and proud to get promoted tonight, well deserved.
Congratulations, guys. Okay. If you guys are ready, we're gonna move on to 11C, motion from zoning board of appeals. Shelley?
Do you guys care if I read them together?
No.
Alright. 11C1, 12th of June 25, United, Inc., request for assigned installation permit in the area of Special Control at 100 North Jackson Street, parcel number 08-22.0-328-023, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the city code 155.052, 155.053, 155.090, Ward 2. Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval with a vote of four to zero. 11C2, 13th June 2025, Jeffrey Scott Hyatt, request for an area bulk variance for construction of a fence higher than six feet at 815 Goss Avenue, parcel 08-28.0-104-007, located in an A1 single-family residence district, applicable sections of the city code 158.127, 155.090, Ward 5. Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval with a vote of four to zero. 11C3, 15th June 2025, Mozam Karim, request for a special use permit for a convenience store at 2709 West Main Street, parcel 08-20.0-204-001-002, located in a C2 heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the city code 162.248, 162.515, Ward 2. Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval with a four to zero vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 11D, motion from Historic Preservation Commission. Shelley, you want to read it?
Sure. Motion to approve replacement of a historic district banner at 125 Mascuda Avenue with a banner of Gustav and Sophie Kerner.
Move to tables, request.
Dowling Urban?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to table? Any discussion?
There's a question about the location of this, the motion is 127 Mascuda Avenue.
Yeah, that's fine.
What is the address of the Gustav Kerner house? How far is this apartment from?
It's catty corner.
It's catty corner from?
Yeah, empty building.
Yeah, I don't know what the Gustav Kerner house is off the top of my head.
Empty building. You only should see empty buildings there.
It's a Mascud, I have enough.
The actual address of the Gustav Kerner house is 200 Abind Street.
Oh, Abind, okay.
It's at the door of Abind, right?
And it sounds like you have no, they had no objection to it being on the actual property of the Gustav Kerner house, they just didn't want to work this location.
Right. Right, that's the building the city...
Yes, so what we'll end up having to do is, so we don't have the ability to just carte blanche put banners up on street poles, we'll have to figure out exactly which street pole to place it on and if it's an Ameren pole, we'll have to work out that agreement with Ameren. If it happens to be a city street light, which most of them on Abind are city, then we can place it, but we'll figure that out and we'll bring it back. How's that? So we have a motion and a second to table. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Alder Person Elmore, motion from Traffic and Parking Committee?
I'm gonna go ahead and read this group.
Yep.
Motion to approve parking space at 209 South 16th in the name of the Advocate Bolley. That's our motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Motion from Master Sewer Committee, Alder Person, Dittelman, do you mind doing these in absence of Alder Person Sullivan?
Love to. We have three of them, can we do them together?
Yes.
Okay, 11F, motions from Master Sewer Committee, I'd like to read these three off for you. 11F1, motion to approve an agreement with BOSS1 or 811 for Julie Software for $3,600. 11F2, motion to waive formal bidding to purchase a 2025 Ford F-150 from Schmidt Ford for $44,958.70. 11F3, motion to approve an electric easement between the City of Belleville and Ameren, Illinois located at 501 Hecker Street, parcel 08-22.0...
Parcel zero eight dash two two point zero dash two one five dash zero three four for the East Creek Sewer Separation Project.
Schneider, a second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Gentlemen.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant. Asta.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Okay, motions carry. Communication, Shelley.
Okay, are you all okay with me reading them together?
Yes.
Okay. Law Day Run, five two twenty-six, requests from St. Clair County Bar Association and Bellevue Running Club to hold the Law Day Run Saturday, May second, twenty twenty-six, nine A M. to twelve P M. Street closure requests, North High Street from Main Street to include East A Street to North Jackson, eight thirty A M. to one P M. No parking on High Street from East D Street to McKinley on Abin Street and municipal lot behind Lincoln Theater after one A M. on Saturday, May second, twenty twenty-six. Additional city services requested, toders, barricades, picnic tables, folding tables and police personnel. Twelve B, Harvest Festival, nine twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, request from Long Story Coffee to host the Harvest Festival, Sunday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, two P M. to six P M. Street closure requests, South High Street, north of railroad tracks to north of East Grant Street. East Grant Street from South High to Alley, twelve P M. to seven P M. Additional city services, no parking signage, trash toder, barricades and picnic tables. Twelve C, Bellevue Indy Market, nine twenty-seven twenty-five. And eleven one, twenty twenty-five, request from Sweet Honey to host Bellevue Indy Market Saturday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, five P M. to nine P M. Rain date, Sunday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. And Saturday, November first, twenty twenty-five, four P M. to eight P M. Rain date, Sunday, November second, twenty twenty-five. Street closure requests, South High Street from East Main Street to East Washington, one P M. to eleven P M. City service requested, barricades, trash toder, picnic tables and no parking signage. Twelve D, Space Race, nine six, twenty twenty-five, request from Luna Park to host Space Race Glow-in-the-Dark Golf Event at Latterman Park, Saturday, September sixth, twenty twenty-five, eight P M. to nine thirty. No additional city services requested. Twelve E, Say Less Community Fest, twenty twenty-five, nine twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. And nine twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, request from Prevail Institute for Flourishing Communities, Communities, Inc. to host Say Less Community Fest, twenty twenty-five, at Bellevue Park, Saturday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, twelve P M. to seven P M. And Sunday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve P M. to six P M. Additional city services requested, trash toders, reserved signage, police personnel.
I need a motion.
Randall, so moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have no petitions for resolutions. I need a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-five forty-nine.
Randall, so moved.
Steele, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hey. Fourteen A, resolution thirty-five forty-nine, a resolution to adopt bike pedestrian master plan.
Anthony, so moved.
Steele, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Gentlemen.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Asta.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Ordinance is, I need a motion to read by title only and as a group. Ordinance is ninety-three ninety-seven, ninety-three ninety-eight, ninety-three ninety-nine, ninety-four hundred, ninety-four oh one.
Randall, so moved.
Dowling Urban.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Shelley.
Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-three ninety-seven, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards case zero eight, April twenty-five. Philippe Elias Campos and Gabriela Contento. Fifteen B, ordinance ninety-three ninety-eight, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards case twelve, June twenty-fifth, uh, June twenty twenty-five, United, Inc., Rich Laux, Community Connections and Service, LLC. Fifteen C, ordinance ninety-three ninety-nine, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance in regards case thirteen, June twenty-five, Jeffrey Scott Hyatt. Fifteen D, ordinance ninety-four hundred, twenty twenty-five, a zoning ordinance in regards to case fifteen, June twenty-five, Mozam Karim. Fifteen E, ordinance ninety-four oh one, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance amending Article seven, traffic code, chapter seventy-six, parking schedules of the revised ordinance of city of Bellevue, Illinois as amended by the amending portions of section thereof.
Motion. Second. Schneider. Any discussion? Roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Gentlemen.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Asta.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Okay, motions carry. We have no unfinished business miscellaneous and new. I need a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and eighty-three cents.
Rothweiler.
Duco.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ovian.
Aye.
Gentlemen.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Asta.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Dowling Urban.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed. We're adjourned.